Glad to welcome everybody to the City of Palatka, June 13th, 2019 Commission Meeting. At this time, we will have our invocation by Reverend Mark Chumney, Pastor of Victory Christian Fellowship. Reverend Chumney, can you also lead us with the pledge as well? Will everyone please stand at this time?
Let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for each and every person who is represented in this room. God, we thank you for each and every one of these servants who are seated at my right, Lord, for their dedication to this community, for their hard work and their service. God, I pray that you would bless them. Lord, that you would, in this meeting, bring peace and unity and love, and, Lord, that you would pour out favor and blessings upon Palatka. And, God, we will be careful to give you all the glory and all the honor for that. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Senator Gerald Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Right there.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
President.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Chairman McCaskill.
Here.
All members of the Commissioner present and accounted for, and you have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there motion on the floor and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognitions and presentations. We have one for today, and it's the Palatka Young Professionals. Will everyone from PYP please come forward at this time? This is our professionals, under 45 in this city. So some of us are starting our own organization called PYP. But on a serious note, this is the group of young professionals who've all gathered together and thought it not robbery to take on the task of bringing back the Blue Craft Festival. A very huge task that took them away from their families for months on this three and a half month journey. And they did an awesome job. Anybody who got a chance to go see the Blue Craft Festival or be a part of it, you got a chance to see a group that put together something in a few months that would take most people a year to do. They did a great job, and it was an opportunity to bring, to really unite wisdom from those in the past who have been a part of the festival and to start to galvanize the community as a whole on the backs of young professionals. And that's what this is all about. We've talked over and over again about having our young people come back home so that they can raise families, so that they can be an integral part of the community. And what we see today is just a shining example of what that truly means. And so, on behalf of the City of Palatka, we want to give you guys a commemoration since Palatka City Commission's Distinguished Community Service Award presented to Palatka Young Professionals. And grateful recognition for your master organization, the 2019 Palatka Blue Craft Festival, June 13th, 2019, Palatka City Commission and staff. And we will present this. David.
Yeah.
Hey, you're the first one, okay? And so, we want to give this to you guys and just give you guys a round of applause.
Yeah.
Hey, you got three seconds to respond.
Thank you. This was a pleasure, and this was such an experience for all of us. We, I think thoroughly enjoyed spending time with one another, and we didn't want to kill each other again. We came out with stronger friendships than I think that did something. They didn't want to kill each other, they just wanted to kill me. No, thank you. This is beautiful, and we appreciate it very much. It means a lot.
Can we get a picture with PYP and the Commissioner together?
Yeah.
Matt, why they just did such a good job when they got the young professionals?
This is the President of PYP.
Can we help each one of them tell us what their business is or what they do in town? Because it's being recorded, y'all.
Alright, so let's how we do this. Slide up a little bit.
Yeah, just get up. You guys need a nice.
Insert in. We'll kind of.
Come on, girl. Don't hide, don't hide. You look at, boy.
You want to get in the picture, sweetie?
You can get in the front. You can pin in anywhere in the front. Stay 46 on three. One. Alright, one, two, three.
Good job.
Alright, let me get a few more.
Alright, I'll take a picture of this here. Get it from him.
Yeah, but that brace. You're normal now?
Well, not normal. You're performing well.
So that means you guys are getting ready to put your special events perm in there for next year?
I know that's right, y'all.
You're a fan.
Y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Thanks for all y'all did.
Yeah.
Continue to do.
Y'all look like oozers up here with me now.
And we do.
I'm telling ya.
I done, I'm a year off. So again, moving forward to item number two of the agenda, which is public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Seeing no one, period. Moving forward to item three of the agenda. We want to make sure we acknowledge Ms. Kitchens, who's here, always, ever faithful.
The only one.
She's the only one here who's not on salary. And so, moving forward, we're becoming a cyber community for our meetings. Item number three on the agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed from items A through M?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
So is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion on the floor and a second? Is there any further discussion?
I just, I just got a question. Why we not getting two approved from the prison?
You already approved one. This is the second.
Oh, okay.
We got you. We've been trying to sneak out a third. So. We've been working on that for a while. So you've got everything in the agenda. We've got a motion, we've got a second. A question was called by Commissioner Borum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four of the agenda, public hearing ordinance annexing and rezoning 209 South Palm Avenue from County Urban Services to City Commercial C1 PB, case number 19-11, First Assembly of God, first reading, item A, annexation ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palatka, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 209 South Palm Avenue, located in Section 12, Township 10 South, Range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palatka and providing an effective date.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Brown, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Mr. Lochnick.
Yes. The First Assembly of God Church owns this property. They own some of the surrounding properties which are already in the city. They want to bring this property into the city, and we're going to assign the, basically, the same land use zoning that's on the property now in the county. Just the basic commercial C1 zoning. The property used to be an old bread store. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. And there's no proposal for any developments or changes to the property at this time.
So it's another piece of property that's going off the tax roll, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So can someone do some research for me to figure out if the property is not being used strictly for religious purposes or for whatever purposes under the tax exempt status? Does that property still fall within the same, within the same realm? Or can that property be subject to taxes? Because we, what we're finding is an unconsciousness. There's a, there's an unconscious decision made in many parts by a lot of organizations and entities to just pull tax, pull pieces off the tax rolls. And they're oftentimes being used for other purposes. And we just want to make sure that the properties, that we got to make a difference to ensure that the property's being used for the proper purposes. And if they're not meeting the standards, then they need to fall in line with everything else. Because if we continually, if we continue to take commercial property off the tax rolls and there is no additional benefit that comes from that, we're going to continually have over 47% of our properties that aren't paying taxes, and the burden falls on the people who do pay taxes. And that's why you end up with things like fire assessment.
But that's what I was saying. At least we getting fire assessment off of it and maybe making it contiguous so some of the property makes fit to be brought in?
But it doesn't cover, but the fire assessment doesn't cover what you were getting in taxes.
I know.
And we did have a discussion about what we can do about continually bringing in properties that do not contribute to the tax base. And there are churches that do use properties like this, sometimes for daycares, sometimes for schools. And we can make those, we can make a case for that. We did that with the First Baptist Church and the large block that they annexed.
Yeah, in addition to that, too, like I was saying, we're taking those properties off the tax roll, but even with the fire assessment, we're only charging at 50%. So if they're not getting the full 100% like our regular taxpayers are, so we need to really look into those things.
Got it. We got a bunch, we got a bunch of meetings coming up. So again, we've got the information before us. I just think that part of it is educating the community as a whole as to what the impacts are so that they understand that, you know, it's, it's okay to expand, but understand that what caused your expanding. So, so that's my discussion at this point. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item B, rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka providing the official zoning map of the City of Palatka, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C-1 Commercial to City C-1 General Commercial for the following property. 209 South Palm Avenue, Section 12, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Motion on the floor and a second.
Let me ask you a question. Good. Steve?
Sure.
How is the church property zoned? The prime, the principal church property, how is it zoned?
I think it's a mixed zoning there. Well, actually, they have C1. Primary church is C1, and most of the surrounding property is C1. The whole area was commercial, I guess, at one point. And since the church basically is allowed use in any zoning district, there's not really any reason to change it to something else.
Gotcha.
So it was a C, it was a commercial zoning with the county. I just basically made the equivalent zoning with the city. And it could, at some point, be sold off and become a commercial property again, going to the major concern.
Thanks.
If I was to stop right there, they told us. I thought everything on this side of Palm Avenue was in this city.
And don't, this is a question, not a comment or, and I'm not trying to advocate anything. In your experience, do other jurisdictions create a separate zoning category for churches? Or do they restrict the numbers of, the types of categories into which churches can, can be located without special exception or special use, conditional use permits?
The only exception I've seen, at least in my places I've worked, have been like preservation land use. But basically, they, they are allowed in most land uses in most zoning districts, generally speaking.
Thanks.
We did, a couple of years ago, zoned them off of St. John's Avenue for business.
I know, but that was because of an overlay zone.
Right. Yeah. And so, that was in the downtown.
Wasn't very popular.
Yeah.
But I just think that my, my idea is not necessarily to, to zone out or time, place, manner, whatever, however you want to call it. The churches, per se, is, there's a, we use church as an example, but it really falls up under any entity. And we, when we start talking about institutions that are tax exempt for those purposes, if they're, if the ancillary buildings that they're getting are not for the primary tax exempt purpose, then should, is that capitalism as opposed to the function that they have in place? And should they be treated as any other business? Because we're talking about a bread store. And I mean, you already got a, you got a large sanctuary. So are you going to create a secondary sanctuary in the bread store? Or is it going to be something that's going to be used for capital purpose? So if it becomes a store again, then that's far different than using it for religious purposes, per se. And so, you know, it's no different than if the city leases a piece of property to someone and that person becomes subject, based upon what's in place, to paying tax, paying, paying property taxes. And we just have to kind of look at it from that standpoint.
Property appraiser ultimately gets to decide and interpret, if you would, to what extent a property is or isn't exempt. And the current implications would be unchanged by this annexation. The property may not be paying, and I don't know, but the property probably not paying any taxes now. It's already affiliated with the church. But like I say, ultimately, the property appraiser gets to make that assessment.
Probably was affiliated with a bread store. It was affiliated with Marita at one point. So, and that's just, I think it's food for thought. It may be time for us to start to go out and create some mechanism audit to see exactly what these properties being used for and determine if, if we are missing opportunities for, at Lord, taxes to be brought into place.
When you look at the last four annexations that this commission has approved, two of them were for residential properties, and then two of them were nonprofits. One was a church and one was a DFW.
So. There we go. Anything else? That open, I'll do public hearing again.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here, close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lochnick. 2020 Census Preparation, item number five on the agenda.
I'll speak to that. The 2020 Census takes place on April the 1st, 2020. There's a lot of preparation rolling up to the 2020 Census. It happens every 10 years, and this is a count in place to determine how many citizens we have, where the, and, and economic development, all sorts of development. These are statistics and figures that are going to be used for the next 10 years to decide where to place businesses, where commercial needs to go, where schools needs to go. Do we need new schools? Congressional districts, as you know, the last time during the 2010 Census, we actually had our congressional districts redrawn. We used to have two congressional representatives for Putnam County because it was sliced down the middle, and then we lost one and strictly went with one more, with the one remaining. This is also how we are, the state and federally shared revenues is determined as to how we get our fair share. Because there's the county that gets its pot, and then the municipalities get their pot, which is dependent upon population. So it's very important that we get a good count. In the 2010, or 2000 Census, we didn't put a big push on, and we were one of the most poorly counted counties in the state of Florida. The 2010 Census, we had a huge push going on. We started about a year ahead of time, and we got everybody into the act. And we had one of the highest success rates of any county in the state of Florida. So I contacted the county because they're the ones that the census usually works with. Apparently, the state of Florida's gotten off to a very slow start on the census because there are some questions about questions that are going on the census ballot. So the county has contacted Atlanta. They're coming in to have a meeting with them in two weeks to get us started. But the biggest thing is bringing in partners. I've given you a lot of literature that I downloaded off of the federal website, you know, what you need to know. Basically, there are a lot of people who are afraid to be counted. They're afraid to go on this census roll because they think that it's going to affect them now. But census data is not released for 10 years. I mean, they're counting heads, but they're not releasing any information on who's being counted, where they're being counted. You know, some people are just afraid to be counted, and we need to, we need to try to talk to them and allay their fears. Privacy is absolutely protected. There's a lot of information in here, partners we need to bring in. And the two biggest partners that we brought in the last time were the churches and the Palatka Housing Authority. Because that is where the counts start and end. Those are, the housing authority and the homeless are the most severely undercounted. So I just want to let you guys know that we do need to get started on this. We've got a late start on it, but hopefully that won't affect us, and we're following the county's lead.
I think the information, don't get released until 80, like 80 years.
Right, 80, 88 years.
Yeah. So people probably won't be here during that time period. Most people won't be. But they also are hiring students. They want to hire some students as it relates to the next census, census.
Right. And those census jobs don't end when the census ends. Some of them keep going because, yeah. And so, and they're good, they're good employment opportunities. The census is hiring.
And they hire felons. Yeah.
The, the other thing is that people don't think about, now, when we get our driver's license, we have to come up with birth certificates. A lot of our older people did not have, were not born in hospitals. They were born at home, and birth certificates are hard to come by. But the, the driver's license people will accept the census records to get, to help you get your driver's license or your identification card.
I didn't know that. That's something. That's some information that really needs to be given now.
You have to be older than 88 years old for your information, like, to be out there.
We went through a training when we went to FDC Leo Conference in Fort Lauderdale, and we heard of an instance where the census information that was filled out actually saved the lady from being deported.
Wow. Yeah.
And also help people be able to get benefits. As it relates.
Self-security and.
Yeah.
So let's do this. Let's, if, if the commission's agreeable, we'll start to plan to have information sessions in various parts of the community.
Yeah.
So that, so we'll put them on in each one of our, in each one of our zones. I'm sure PPD and the Fire Department will help host those. And that will allow us to be able to disseminate the information necessary to get some stuff out. And so, we can start to touch, find anchor churches or community centers within each area that will allow us to get the stuff out to the folks, and we'll get PHA to host one as well.
Right.
And Betsy's going to take the lead on it because she knows more about census than anybody.
Hey, Mayor, the, the director for, no, actually, she's, she's part of the fellow group, but she said that she will come here.
We would love to happen.
And Commissioner, and Commissioner Borum's going to co-chair. So he's already got the contact with the director. No need to work around that, right?
I try to help.
Anybody else? Got some information? Ms. Brown's going to be third on that group.
We all need to participate. We all need to.
But, but, but I'll jokes aside, we need to go ahead and hit all four districts and get that information out, whether it's through Powell Parents, high schools, the school district. They're going to have the quickest access to anybody. But let's just make sure we start to flood. We flood the area, and let's take the lead from the city side and make sure we motivate the county to do what they need to do, as well as send the challenge out to other municipalities. And if we've got those contacts, let's see if we can get them in the area and they can start to hit all five municipalities while they're here. So let's just try to take the lead and make it happen. So moving forward. Item number six on the agenda. Ms. Driggers, you're up.
We received a letter from the Palmer Group. Would you like to read the letter, or you want me to read it?
You can go ahead.
Okay, they wanted it read into the record. It said, "The letter went to Mayor Gerald Hill, myself, City Attorney Don Holmes, and Planner Steve Lochnick." It says, "Our group has been involved in more than $15 billion of development over the last 50-plus years. We all agree that only occasionally have we had the fortune to work with a staff like that of the City of Palatka. We were struck with, while always keeping their city's best interests at heart, everyone could sift through their individual processes, letting us feel their willingness to help move our development forward. And their development is 194-unit housing development, affordable housing development. Steve Lochnick is an exemplary professional who obviously cares about his community and helps it grow and prosper by being proactive with new development activity. Mr. Lochnick has set a high standard. You are welcome to come to our city, just do it right. Ms. Driggers' expertise showed in keeping her staff focused, positive, and proficient through the ups and downs of the bureaucratic processes for which we are eternally grateful. Compliments to Mr. Don Holmes. He serves the city well from the get-go, fiercely protecting its interests while delivering his message that he expects our cottages to be first class and to pass the test of time. We thank Mayor Gerald Hill for his ever-present patience and encouragement that kept us looking forward to a positive outline, outcome. We trust that we have created a plan and a set of documents to develop the cottages at St. John's PUD that will live up to your demands and expectations of setting a level of excellence and planning for future developments. We've become fond of the City of Palatka and are delighted to move forward with this project and to become stellar citizens of the city. Four Cottages Holding LLC and the Cottages of St. John's LLC." Now, he did want that read into the record at the next meeting. That was the email that came along. And it's always nice when you get compliments like that about your staff. You know, this is the biggest project that we've had in more than 10 years. I don't, in fact, I think the apartment complexes were probably the most comparable ones that we've had actually come into the city. And so, like I said, congratulations to staff. Congratulations to this commission for moving this project along, and hopefully, we'll see it start coming to fruition soon. Developmental compliments.
I don't think he said all those nice things about me while we were.
He put them in print. Y'all need to smile because you don't get, you don't get that usually.
Legal document.
That's right. He printed it up, and it's on the record.
And echoed them verbally.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Moving on, number two. We're actually, item number one, B1, our executive search and interim city manager's search. Those things that were brought over from our last meeting on Monday.
Good evening. John, what voice today? We.
You need to identify yourself for the record.
Deborah Robinson.
We couldn't hear you.
He's back. On Tuesday, we decided to go with Mercer Group out of Daytona Shores as the executive search firm for the next city manager's search. Been in contact with them, and Ms. Driggers, we already received the contract for their services. They will be available next week on site on Tuesday, which is the tentative date, where they can answer any questions. There is a, they did send out, I'm sending to you guys, that I received this afternoon, just a structure of some questions that you may have and some things that they can answer for you. The second piece of this is the interim city manager. Tentatively, we're looking at Tuesday to meet with all three that were suggested on Tuesday to have the conversation planned.
What time?
4:00.
Thought that would be best for all of your schedules. Yeah, we do have a convention board meeting. Back to the drawing room. Might have a convention board meeting. Might go with me.
Last 30 minutes. Maybe five.
Okay, 5:00. We'll do it. Okay. And also Representative, the Marshall group is going to be here on Tuesday, correct?
That is correct.
Yes. Get this conversation started.
Okay. Anything else from the commission as it relates to that report? Senior, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
Moving forward, comments. Chief. Chief's gone. Mr. Lochnick. No you today. Ms. Becker. Ms. Tucker.
I just wanted to announce the city's latest EPA grant. We got another three hundred thousand.
What's your name for the record? What's your name for the record?
Mandy Tucker. Yes. Grant. It's three hundred thousand.
That was in the, okay, that was in the.
We had four hundred thousand that we closed out. We got a new one.
Second round, second round success. Now we can work on the other projects.
That's a matter of boy.
So. Mr. Holmes.
Nothing.
Ms. Driggers. Commissioner Borum.
Nothing.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Just a question for Powell. You, you started your summer program at B C Low yet and how, how are the numbers? How's it going? I'm sorry. I guess I should have asked that one.
Jason Shaw, chief. Uh, yes, ma'am.
You can say whatever you want, sir.
Yes, ma'am. We did start the camps. Camp started up Monday. We were actually going to be coming back at the next meeting and giving the report how it was going to be, how it's going thus far. We do have a little over seventy kids in the camp and it's growing by the day. Black it usually does during the first week. Again, not to just go into it because I do want to save the report as much as possible, but we have, with the help of Ms. Robinson and Commissioner Campbell, we have some wonderful interns that are doing fabulous job. And the camp is so far going great.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Vice Mayor.
Just a short thing for me. I had, y'all had shown me to follow up with the business incubator. Well, I've been talking to Father Mark, who is Episcopal minister here in town. And Episcopal church, I told you, had led the field in getting the one in Jacksonville started.
Beaver Street.
Yeah. Father Mark had asked me to wait and he called this past week. He said that he has been talking to a gentleman with, named Mr. Green, who had helped get the one in Jacksonville started. And he would like to meet with, any, if y'all would like for all of us to meet with him on June 2nd.
That's already going.
I have to get, I have to get there with the what time?
That was two weeks ago.
I mean, July, sorry.
That's, uh.
July 2nd. July 2nd. I can have Betsy, Betsy know to let y'all know about the time and if we need to do notification. But I wanted to put it to you all to see if you wanted to do it. If.
He's coming here or we taking another Jacksonville trip?
I think he's coming here to St. Mark's. I have all the information for you. I just wanted y'all to put that date on your calendar.
Is that date etched in stone? Is that the wrong date he's there for?
That's the day he gave me right now and asked that I make sure I could be here. And I wanted to pass it along because I, I think that all of us need to be there if you all would like to do it that way. I would love for everybody to be there.
Just tell us.
July 2nd and I'll have, I'll let him, let you know what time.
Y'all always tell us what to do.
Well, that's what mamas are fine.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes, just real quick. You should have received the email from Betsy. Interfaith, new program is coming to visit City Hall on Jul, June the 18th at 2:00 PM. And if you have time to escape or to come back and just have a little chit chat with them, motivational type deal, nothing long drawn out, that'll be perfect. And then from City Hall, they're going to trek over to the River Center to walk around there. So if you have time, just stop by. And that also goes for department heads as well.
I thought they'd love to meet the police chief and the fire chief.
June the 18th at 2:00 PM.
Okay. It's Tuesday.
Yeah, um.
We've got pension boards, yeah.
Had an opportunity this week on Tuesday to go visit the North Central Florida Church School District's convention at Mount Zion Primitive Baptist Church. And the entire commission was there. Folks went from all over the, this region and they were really excited about seeing the commission. It was a wonderful service. And it's not too often that we find ourselves at the same place during the middle of the week. We'll find ourselves at a lot of events together, but I think it was good, it was a good showing for the commission to be there. And then the following day, I got an opportunity to go into the Box City Summer Camp at First Presbyterian and watch kids who put box model. They'd use cardboard boxes to make models of every, of the buildings in downtown Palatka and throughout the city. And these were mostly elementary school kids. Revitalized was a part of that. And it was an awesome presentation. So if you get an opportunity to go by First Presbyterian in Westmoreland, go by and see it. It's, it's just amazing what these kids have done, what their vision is for this community and, and just the amount of work that the adults put in with them. And so those were two highlights for this week for me. With that, I have nothing else. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.